Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call this meeting a regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Today is Thursday, the 26th of April. It is 7:05. Could we have a roll call, please?
I'm Robert Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Joanne Stephen.
Here.
Commissioner Jeffrey Sims. Absent. Commissioner Alvin DeGenet.
Here.
Commissioner Ray Baker.
Here.
Vice Chair Patricia Corsick.
Present.
And Chair Jeffrey Barnes.
Present. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Stephan, could you lead us, please?
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, we need to approve the agenda. I get a motion.
I saw move.
Motion from Commissioner Baker, a second.
I'll second.
Second from Vice Chair Korzak. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. And having no items, we will move on. Next approval of minutes, there are none. And now to the public comment portion of the meeting. Any person wishing to address the commission on any matter, either under the public comment section of the agenda or scheduled items or public hearings, must fill out a request to speak form available at the door. We seem to have a full house tonight, so if you could please watch the time and limit yourself to three minutes, we all would greatly appreciate it. So do we have any speakers?
We do, we have one. We have Ken Iglesias.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff, and fellow residents. Let me tell you what I saw before I came here. I actually saw it live on CNN. When the leader of North Korea shook hands with the leader of South Korea, and then the leader of South Korea crossed that cement line through North Korea, and then both leaders crossed into the South Korea, when they then went to see secret meetings. Okay. And then, second, I would really like that the commission please ensure that most of Moreno Valley has fiber optic internet within the next five years, because we really need fast internet. Slow internet is very not good. And lastly, I wish that if there's any new housing developments coming, can you please have like a nicer access sidewalk to the main streets? And lastly, if I would like to see like a nice east coast house development, because that's where we like enough Spanish type houses, I would like to see something much nicer. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have one more.
Late additions.
Yes.
Mr. Regueros.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff, residents, and our guests. I would like to bring up an issue that's important, that I want you to understand and learn. The homes that are being built on Eucalyptus between Nathan and Moreno Beach, the homes are up, three of them, the showroom homes are up. Their grand opening is May 5th. They're already open, but their main activity will be May 5th. I would love to see each and one of you go to see what was approved from this commission. But what I'm trying to share and teach here is, when you go look at those homes, I want you to look at the backyard. I really, that's what I really want you to look at, is the backyard. So when you have developers or residents that come here in the future and talk about that 7,200 square foot is not big compared to what's being built now, you will understand that 7,200 foot, 10,000 square foot are pretty large lots compared to what these people are going to get for $330,000. I hope you do go, because that will set the vision for this commission to look at lot sizes. When people complain about lot sizes, you don't know what it's like until you see these homes and look at the backyard, okay? And now, people are going to buy them, and I'm happy for people that buy homes. But the thing is, what I want is people not to complain in the future about 7,200 square foot lots, or bigger, or 4,000, 5,000, because when you look at these lots now, and if you do go for the grand opening, you'll understand, when you hear people complain about small lots, they don't know what's small lots until you look at these lots, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Regueros. No additional speakers?
No, sir.
Thank you. We will close the public comment portion and move on to non-public hearing items, of which there are none. So the first public hearing item of this evening, case PEN 17-0044, 170045, 170046, a master plot plan, plot plan and a conditional use permit. The applicant is Western State's Engineering. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Associate Planner Jeff Bradshaw will be presenting the staff report for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Barnes, and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you this evening was actually scheduled to be presented to you on, at the April 12th meeting. That was continued to tonight's meeting at the request of the applicant, and that was to allow for time for some community outreach and an opportunity for the applicant to meet with residents and discuss his project. There was at least one community meeting held on past Saturday, that the applicant was in attendance, and I was there as well. As we have kind of an introduction to this project, there are three different applications that are being presented to you this evening that would represent the totality or the completeness of the project. Some of those are plot plans, which would be for permitted uses, and one of those is for a conditional use permit, and that's for the gas station. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the distinction between the two. So our code identify, let me back up, our city, property within the city is zoned for different types of uses. In the case of the project site, it's zoned for commercial development. Under the neighborhood commercial category of zoning for our community, there's a list of uses that are permitted, and there's a list of uses that are conditional. Permitted uses would be those uses that fall under that category wherein the developer requests to develop that use, whatever it might be, a retail center, a medical office, whatever it is, and they work with staff to satisfy development requirements for that use, and that might include setbacks, might include building height, might include some architectural details. Staff would work with the developer to ensure that city requirements were met, and then the project would be presented to the Planning Commission with the recommendation. And in most instances, a permitted use would then be approved because they've satisfied city requirements. Conditional use is different. The conditional uses are those that have been identified that have the potential for an impact to an adjacent sensitive use such as residences or a school site. And so in those cases, the Planning Commission is allowed a little more discretion, a little more leeway in the way they review the project, both in being able to make findings in support of the project, or to make findings to deny the project. There are instances where special requirements or conditions might be applied to a project as well with the discretion of the Planning Commission. So I just wanted to be able to make that distinction with you this evening. The project does include three applications. One is a master plot plan, and that would be the application that would guide the overall design of the project, the parking lot layout, the landscape, the architecture for the center. There is a second application for a conditional use permit for a gas station. And the operation of that gas station would include a convenience store. In this case, the applicant's requesting beer and wine sales out of that facility, so that would require a separate, or I'm sorry, that is also a conditional use in this zone. So the sale, both the sale of the alcohol sales and the gas station at this location would be considered a conditional use. That application would include, like I described, the convenience store, the gas station operation, and the car wash. The third application is a plot plan, and that is for two spaces within the project that are proposed for restaurant use. As you noted in the staff report, the project will include a single building, a retail building. One of the units within that building would be the convenience store location, and two locations within that building would be for the restaurants that are proposed under This project is located on a two-point, roughly five acre to an half acre site that is currently zoned commercial. The uses that are proposed, the retail building and the car wash are permitted uses, and again, the gas station operation would require your approval of a conditional use permit Following the public meeting and even the noticing for the May 12th meeting, I did receive correspondence from residents in the community stating their opposition to the project. We prepared a memo for you this evening as a cover to that correspondence. It includes, I think, about 14 emails and five or six letters from residents in the community, either stating their opposition or going on to state their specific concerns about how they feel this project might impact the community, and those are available to you this evening for your consideration. Staff worked with an environmental consultant, Sagecrest, in the preparation of an environmental document for this project. We had the opportunity to review potential impacts of this project under all the categories in that initial study checklist. Technical studies were prepared. In the project, out of that review, it was determined that the project would not create impacts with incorporation of mitigation measures on the project, and those are referenced in the staff report. And those would address potential impacts under the categories of noise, traffic, and cultural resources. Included in the tonight's packet were some recommended conditions of approval from both planning and the police department with regards to the operation of the gas station, more specifically the convenience store. Also provided to you this evening is some correspondence from our police department. Their policies have changed with regards to how they review projects and what they would consider to be conditions of approval versus recommendations. And their request of us this evening is to insert the recommendations for this project as you see on the memo that was provided to you. And so I would read that correction into the record. The recommendation from staff is to replace the police department conditions that you find in the staff report now with a single condition from the police department that would read as follows. "The police department has reviewed the documents for the above listed project. The following recommendations have been identified. The installation of an alarm system with coverage of all exterior doors, windows, including glass breakage, interior office door if applicable, interior motion, and safe or other storage device used for currency or other valuables if appropriate. Alarm system should have monitoring capability with law enforcement or private security service notification. ABC approvals are required if alcohol is to be served or sold on premises. Structure, exterior recommended to have vandal resistant lighting with continuous or motion activated illumination. CCTV surveillance system with recorded capability." The above recommendations, or above our recommendations only are not required in order to obtain permits, licenses, or approval to build or conduct business in the city of Moreno Valley. And so that would be our recommendation as a modification to the conditions that you have before you this evening. In the correspondence that you did receive, some of the concerns stated by the community were potential impacts from the service station operation, noise, light, vagrancy, crime, things that are a concern to the neighborhood. Alcohol sales are also identified as a concern. The other email that you received in your packet was also from the school district, who reviewed the project and specifically stated their concerns with alcohol sales at this location as well. Applicant is here this evening to speak for their project. Also with us this evening is Josh Hashkins with Sagecrest, who worked with the city to prepare the environmental document. And that, I would conclude my staff report, and I'd be prepared to answer any questions that you might have about the project.
Thank you, Jeff. Before we get to questions, would the applicant or his representative like to add to the staff report, anyway? Board?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Joseph Karaki. I'm the applicant. I'm also the architect engineer on record for this project in here. This is not my first project in the city of Moreno Valley. We've been here developing before. I have one going on Day Street and Eucalyptus, and then we had a project that has been built also on Sunnymead and Graham in the past, and we have this one in here, so we're familiar with the city. We are very happy to come to the city and do development. For this project in here, we acquired the property two years ago, and it was zoned for the neighborhood commercial. We filed an application almost a year ago, and we've been working with the city staff to allow us to comply with what the zone allows us to do on this project. So in the meantime, we had contacted nationwide companies such as Starbucks and big companies to see if they can come to the site. Nobody wants to come to the site as far as brand name and to the location. It's a small site, it's not heavy traffic into it, and it's not like CVS or Starbucks and those Smart and Final or Trader Joe's, nobody wants to be into this location. So we decided to develop it on our own, within what the city will allow us to do as far as zoning and code. We proposed to put a car wash, gas station, and two spaces to be run by us, so it's not just to be run by, rented by others. So we'll be family operated and own business as far as the gas station, hamburger place, and sandwich place, and the car wash. So we did the, all the studies that the city had asked us to do as far as SEQA, traffic study, noise study, impact study, and all came with no impact, as you see it in the report. On top of this, this project, as you see, it is underdeveloped, meaning we did not maximize the use of the square footage of the lot versus the square footage of the building. So meaning like, we could increase the square footage of the building versus what we have right now on 2.2 acres. So we're only, if you take the size of the buildings, it's only less than 10,000 square feet of building, where we can double the size if we were to put CVS, for instance, or we put a restaurant with a bar, or we can put fast food, drive-through, and so on. So this is the least of what we, you know, we had proposed to build in here. The business hours for this project will be for the car wash, seven, I'm sorry, 8:00 to 6:00 PM. We shut down at 6:00 PM, and the restaurants will probably shut down between 9:00 to 10:00 PM. The only operated 24 hours business is the gas station. Now, all the studies that we had conducted on the environmental issues came below the threshold, or right at the threshold of creating a hazard environment to the neighbors and to the surrounding. Traffic study was conducted very conservatively, and we took into consideration the future as well. And none of, none of the traffic study had indicated that we'll be generating more traffic. This is not a destination for people to come from far away to this location here, it's just to serve the neighborhood, meaning somebody is not going to come from the city of Beaumont to come to this place to fill up gas or to use the car wash. So with that, this project, you know, the gas station to mention, this is second tax generating business to any city or any state. Will be generating estimated based on volume is between $200,000, $250,000 taxes per year for the city. We will also be creating almost 25 to 30 part-time jobs, full-time to part-time jobs, because those people will be living in the surrounding neighborhood to be working at the businesses we're creating. So we're not bringing other people from other places, other cities, to come and work at this location. So it means we are creating opportunities for people to come and work. I'll come back to the alcohol sale. So those are the traffic studies and analysis. As you see on the packet that you had received, you see that, it says towards the end of the columns of the page, if there's any significant impact, and it says no. And this has been reviewed by our consultant and the city consultant as far as the traffic This is the project that will serve the neighborhood. It's not a project that will be strange from the surrounding, it will complement the surrounding. So again, it's not something that we're building for people to come from far away to be able to use the facility in here. As you see it, we only have two spaces. It will be operated by us, and it will be along with the car wash and the gas station. With this, I want to mention to you, I had met the first time a gentleman named by Tom Ketchum, who had, he's probably here in the audience. He's the person who had contacted the city the first time. This project was to go before the Planning Commission on April 12th. In good faith and good intentions, I asked for continuance of this project so for me to meet with the neighbors. And I met with the neighbors last Saturday at the elementary school down the street. I listened to their concerns, I listened to their worries, but I also informed them that I did what I did within my right to develop this property. I did not ask for a variance, I did not ask for zoning change, I did not ask for anything. I did what the city code allows me to do. And if there is any concern of what they had indicated to me, I'm willing to mitigate the concerns they have. Some of them, they want to put a wall to prevent noise from crossing the property toward their homes. I said yes. Some of them said, put trees. I said yes. Some of them said, right turn, right in, right out. I said yes. Whatever they had asked for, then they said yes. Then they said, can you take out the gas station? I said, well, how would I survive if I tell you yes, 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 on everything, let's grab the project and leave? So I'm willing to work with them, and I respect their wishes, but there is also, I have a right to build. I mean, I'm not asking you to give me a variance to put 100,000 square feet or 10-story building in here. I'm not asking for a zoning change. This is what it was zoned, this is what the city permitted to do, and I'm here to build it within my rights to build. So with this, I will conclude, and if you have any question.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Or staff?
I do have a question. You were talking earlier about the noise, and my understanding is that there's going to be a car wash operating there?
Correct.
Is the car wash planned to be operated for 24 hours?
No. 8:00 to 6:00. Will shut down at 6:00 PM, and it will open at 8:00 AM. So there is no business operated for 24 hours except the gas station alone. And the rest of the businesses will shut down. The restaurant, let's say we're bringing a hamburger place, it's called Burger IM, it's a nationwide chain that we bought it, we bought the franchise. It will be operated till probably 9:00 or 10:00 PM. And the Jersey's Mike, which is Subway equal, will probably shut down the same time at 9:00 or 10:00 PM.
My next question would be, are there going to be any provisions in place to prevent the sale of, say, candies and burgers to students during school hours?
I'm sorry, would you repeat again?
Since it's so close to a school, it would, you would think that students will want to come there, leave school to purchase candies, chips, burgers, that sort of thing, during school hours. So let's say maybe unaccompanied minors coming to the facility to possibly do this. Are there any provisions to maybe help prevent that?
We, the convenience store will be franchised by Circle K, and Circle K has very strict rules of, and training for employees. Now, at one time, Councilman Cabrera had asked me if I'm willing to put a security guard. I said yes. I'm willing to put a security guard standing there to prevent people from going inside or to prevent, you know, any bad act, you know, whether minor or others, to be there. And I said, yes, I'm willing to do this, in order for me to alleviate any problem, you know, with anybody. I said, I'm willing to do this. So if this is what it takes, I'll probably do that.
Questions of staff? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Let's ask some questions of staff, if we have any.
I do.
You do?
Yes.
Please.
As far as the decibels go for the noise, the majority of that is coming from the car wash. And I was glad to see that they, they're shutting it down at 6:00, because it was previously going to be open till 10:00. And I just wondered if somebody could tell me the difference between the evening decibel level in Moreno Valley at 55, I believe it is, and the car wash decibel level would be at 52. What is the difference between 52 and 55? And then, you know, is that?
Josh, I don't know if you'd want to take an opportunity to respond to the noise The distinction maybe between the projected noise output of the car wash and our city standards?
Commissioners, thank you. As far as your question related to the difference between 52 and 55 decibels, I don't know if I can directly answer that question. I do know that the city has a noise standards of 60 decibels in the daytime of 55 in the evening, which is pretty standard. And we're, the project, the proposed project, will be below those standards. The only mitigation measure that's required in order to bring the noise levels below that threshold is the car wash, and I can, I know you have in your packet, but just for everyone's benefit, I can read it very quickly. Mitigation measure for noise is the project applicant shall acquire the proposed car wash to be constructed with automatic constructed with automatic car doors with a minimum of sound transmission class S T C rating of fourteen at the entrance and exit of the car wash, which would be closed prior to operating the car wash for each car to be washed. The project applicant shall also require all vacuum and blower motors to be located within the car wash building, and the operational hours of the car wash shall be limited to between eight A M. and ten P M. And the applicant actually has stated that they're gonna be, actually have lesser hours than that. I know that, that probably didn't directly answer your question about the difference between fifty-two and fifty-five, but it's, um...
If I may, I'll, I'll try and address it a little bit. The, the difference between fifty-two and fifty-five is, is very negligible. Be very difficult for anybody to actually tell the difference without some sort of a measuring instrument. The other thing that I wanna point out is when the applicant came in, they had looked at different versions of the layout, and they were very accommodating to work with the staff to design the car wash so that the exit to the car wash was actually moved to the opposite side of the building, furthest away from the residential units. So that the, the noisy portion of the car wash is usually the blowers for the drying, so when you're exiting. And they did accommodate that. In addition, as the gentleman just explained, the closing doors are gonna be closing on the side closest to the homes, which is gonna provide additional mitigation. So there has been some consideration. It was very, it was very specific to make sure that we minimize the impact to those residential units. There had been some mention by the applicant's engineer that the residents have asked for a, a wall to possibly be put between the homes and the site. From a design aspect, this is intended to be more of a neighborhood commercial center. We did feel as staff that a more open design would be more welcoming. So there is, without the wall, you can feel a connection to the community. We did ask for enhanced landscaping, and, and so there's a pedestrian walkway. It's intended to actually provide benefit to the community, not to impact the community. But as I heard the applicant say, if they wanted to step up and put a wall in, we could work with them on a design. If they think that that wall would provide additional noise mitigation, we can explore that with them. So there, those are the opportunities we have to address the noise.
Thanks, Rick.
I have a question.
Question.
In all fairness to the applicant, I would like to know, is there any way to deter children from actually maybe going into the store during school times to purchase any kind of items? I mean, can you really do something about that?
Are you asking staff or are you asking the applicant?
Staff. I mean, has it ever been presented that way?
I actually turned my speaker on, hoping to kind of answer that before. I'm glad you've asked that question. If we were to try and impose any sort of a condition like that, the enforcement would be, would be difficult. I, I don't know how staff would be able to go out and, and try and really regulate that sort of activity. Even more so, not only kids going in and out of the school at certain hours. That might be easier to, but what they buy in the store, whether it's candy or something? I don't know that we can legally regulate what...
Is it even legal to ask a child, if he's supposed to be in school?
I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but I know that from the city standpoint, that's not something that we can easily regulate. And I would be careful to impose any sort of a condition on a development that the city, because those conditions of approval are things that we're supposed to be able to be able to enforce. I, I think that would be a very difficult thing to do, so I would not be recommending it. But the, the commission has the prerogative to, to work with the applicant to try and address any concerns you have. It's my obligation to just tell you that that could be a difficult thing for us to do.
I have a question about school campuses. Aren't they closed? Isn't, there's not free ingress egress. The kids can't come and go and say please, right? So if... I mean, at lunchtime, they can legally leave, but they can legally, then they can go anywhere. So I don't think we, it's a pretty slippery slope, I think. Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
Um, yes, I just wanted to ask one more question about the sound wall that I guess they didn't wanna do. But that one house that the side yard is part of the, sort of, right, right up against the lot, is that an area that would, they would consider putting a sound wall up? Because I'm thinking that that house is, like, right there.
The, the project's currently conditioned to provide a wall between the, the proposed use and that existing home.
There isn't one there now?
There is, there is a wall now. I don't, I don't know that it extends down the side yard far enough to separate the two uses. So the, the intent of the condition is to have the applicant work with that neighboring property owner to ensure that the, that the full side yard is screened up to the front setback.
What height does that propose to be?
Minimum would be six feet. There's an opportunity to work with, with the developer to, to go to eight feet if need be to, to address visibility as well as, as noise attenuation.
Okay.
I'm just thinking, if that was my backyard, I wouldn't want to, you know.
Could we have a, if, while they try and think of other questions or come up with other questions, summarize the traffic flow, the ins and outs? How are they, how are they, what are the restrictions, or if you could detail that briefly?
I'll defer to Eric Lewis, our traffic engineer, for that.
Thank you.
So, good evening. This site would be served by three driveways. The first one on Moreno Beach Drive would be conditioned for a right-in, right-out. There's currently an existing median that would restrict that movement. The second driveway on J F K. would be right-in, right-out. And that would also be controlled by a, a small raised median installed on J F K. And then the third driveway on Via Entrada would be full access. That's what's proposed. And the, the street there is not residentially fronted. Our, our code specifically discourages driveways that are installed on front-loaded residential, which this is a collector street. And then the, there are trips that originate from within the community. So we'd want to maximize that neighborhood commercial as, as originally mentioned. So with walking and community trips, and to blend it in as, as best as possible. And all the driveways and intersections operate at acceptable levels of service, actually better than, than our city standards with the project.
Thank you. Any other questions?
One last question. The proposal here, or a condition for a CCTV surveillance system. I don't know who could address this question. Would the open access, would CCTV surveillance system also invade the privacy of the surrounding neighbors? Or is there some way to prevent that?
The surveillance system that's recommended there comes as just that, as a recommendation from police, the police department, not as a requirement on the project. With regards to the orientation of the cameras, and I think would be just to, to provide coverage of, of the site itself. And so I think there'd be opportunities through, I'm not familiar with security design, but the intent would be to, to provide eyes on, on the site itself and, and with as little or no impact to the neighborhood as possible.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Having no questions at this time, let's open the public hearing. Do we have a... Yeah. So do we have speakers? I'm sure we do.
We do. We have quite a few.
A reminder to the speakers, if you could state your name and address. I think that's normally what we would like to hear. So if you could go through that quickly before you begin your comments, we'd appreciate it very much.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Jim Larson. I live on two seven nine two five Villa Sonata, right across from the proposed gas station car wash. I am sure that you will hear a lot of different comments and perspectives from the people tonight. I am going to give you my personal perspective. I have lived in the city of Moreno Valley since nineteen eighty-seven. This is my third house. I moved from the first house because the area was getting a little rundown, and we needed more living space for my family. We moved from the second residence to my current residence mainly because we saw the neighborhood deteriorating. And number two, I had a dream. I always wanted to live on a golf course, and we were able to buy a golf course home, our retirement home. There we were on a ninth hole overlooking the ninth green. We put in a pool Jacuzzi and barbecue island. My backyard was my, our resort. We did not need to go to Orange County to the beach. I had my beach right there. While part of my dream disappeared, and my golf course is gone. I live on the lakeside, so we're not getting the golf course back there. But I still have my beach and barbecues. I still go to the front of my yard, open up the garage door, and see the mountains. I still live in a very nice neighborhood. But approximately three weeks ago, when I received the notice of the proposed gas station in my mailbox, my dream house has become a nightmare. I saw what happened to my former neighborhood at Cremaria in Paris, where the Arco Station is. Two young children coming back from the Arco Station, being shot one evening, and one passing away in my neighbor's yard. I'm not gonna blame that specifically on the station, but that does have, stations do, brings in some problems. Hearing the horns blast at this station, smelling the fumes, listening to the low stereos blasting their music, panhandlers undesirables at the station, and property values declining. We do not need this in our neighborhood. We cannot let this happen. Approximately eleven years ago, while I was at the city council meeting regarding the same property, we were told there will be no gas station or liquor allowed at the complex. What happened? Well, it looks like that I might, I may have to relocate again, but when I do, it will not be in Moreno Valley. Thank you.
Next speaker, Josie Arias. Craig McCarthy to follow.
Good evening. My name is Josie Arias. I also live at two seven nine two five Villa Sonata. My home faces north, directly facing the empty lot that is approximately three hundred feet away from my front door. La Casa Drive is to my right. I oppose the car wash gas station. We had a meeting with the owner last Saturday at Landmark. At that meeting, he declared, first, I have every right to do whatever I want with my property. Further, he said, I already have other developed properties here in Moreno Valley, including a gas station. This to me implies that we have no say in this development. And second, he tells us, you have to give me a compelling reason not to develop a gas station car wash. Well, first of all, I have every right to step out of my front door and not have the instant odor of gasoline and oil from the vehicles and gas pumps. I have every right not to have my home lit up from the lights three hundred feet in front of me, twenty-five hours a day like a football field. I have every right not to listen to a car wash that is proposed directly in front of me until eight or nine. I have the right not to have the extra influx of traffic on the narrow two-way street in front of me. There are already so many accidents in front of my home from people speeding in their cars down the hill from La Casa towards Villa Sonata. My own brother-in-law's car was totaled by a speeding driver that rear-ended him when the driver missed a curve. I have the right to be at peace when I go to sleep at night. There are already homeless people at the landmark park adjacent to my property, along with trash, syringes, beer bottles, and condoms. We just had a three-point-seven earthquake yesterday morning, the epicenter of Moreno Valley. What if it was a greater magnitude? Who's to say the friction isn't gonna cause a spark at the pump and cause a fire or crack the underground barrels and further contaminate the immediate zone in front of my home? I can't guarantee it's gonna happen, and you can't guarantee it's not. It's an inherent risk that you would be imposing on us. Also, the runoff from the rains, mixed with the gas and oils from the cars that will constantly further contaminate my street and those surrounding my home, the park, and nearby schools. Second, the compelling reason is me. And we, the people that are here today to oppose this car wash and gas station, I am here before you to ask, beg you, if you will, that you consider our voices not those of the deep pockets and not approve the car wash gas station when casting your vote.
Thank you. Craig McCarthy, followed by Robert and Dania Campus.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the, of the planning commission. It's my honor to be here. My name is Craig McCarthy. I live at two seven nine one five Villa Sonata. I am Jim Larson's next-door neighbor. And I just wanna say, I feel exactly the same way that Jim does, I really, and Josie do. I really can't add a whole lot, except to say that this gas station is totally unnecessary. You can have, we have a gas station right down the street with a car wash within two or three minutes with an easy walking distance. Now, also, the city has a tough time policing these areas, and they do attract many, many undesirable people, primarily the homeless, who, a lot of them have criminal and drug backgrounds. And also, probably, you, you probably could also throw some issues of pedophiles in that area also. I work at the Moreno Valley Mall. I deal with the home, as in the public safety department, I deal, I deal with these people all the time. Gas stations attract them like a magnet. I have an autistic son. The stimulation, the lights, the noises would not do, would not be productive for him. And there's just so many things going on here that are just unacceptable to, to, this is, this, I know this commercial, this lot is zone commercial, but there's, it's totally inappropriate to have an establishment like this so close to a residential neighborhood. And it would be literally a stone's throw away from my home that I have lived in since, my wife and I have lived in since, since September of two thousand and four. We deserve better than this. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. God bless.
Thank you. Robert and Dania Campus, followed by Moreno Valley Unified School District.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My concern is the fact... Oh, sorry. I'm Robert.
Dania.
And Dania Campos. We're on one five two one four La Casa Drive. We're like...
Nine houses.
Nine houses away, right where the golf course carts cross through. And, you know, realistic for an investor's good, business-wise, people, location. It's a great idea, of course. But actually, we came out here and moved over here two years ago for the fact because it's secluded. It's our own oasis. We were up in Ironwood and Day Street, where all the crime's at. We thought it'd be less crime over here, and it's just gonna create more problems, danger, fumes, noise. I don't care what the restrictions are, there's still gonna be more people. There's a lot of kids out here. There's, it's between two elementary schools, and a lot of kids are gonna be out wandering around. There's a lot of them on bikes already that are running around. There's, we see a lot of stuff now that's going on. And then they're gonna be more hanging out. Now, controlling the liquor, you can't control so much of the liquor, even if you wanna control it. You can't control it. Kids get older people to get stuff for them and get it out, and it's go. But a lot of them just hang out, and they go down, down the street to the park. We see that a lot. And then you're gonna see more activity. It's more crime, robbery, drive-bys, burning out, loud music. And I don't think it's right for our neighbors to have that, because they've been here longer, and they appreciate what they're at.
And I just, we really don't need another gas station. Like, we, if you look at the map, the Cheron is literally right down the street in the State of Brothers, and it's got, we got shopping centers and everything. We really do not need another gas station. So we really hope you guys would consider and look at the safety. There's two parks right there in the school. It just makes no sense for a, a gas station surrounded by all these homes in there. So please really consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Moreno Valley Unified School District, followed by Gabrielle Sobley.
Good evening. Tina Dagnall, representing Moreno Valley Unified School District. I'm here speaking on behalf of the district, and also our most precious assets are children. You know, we have our, our kids that are walking through this area... Um, you know, we have our, our kids that are walking through this area all the time. Like the gentleman said, we have two schools in that area along with the park that is a, seems to be a hangout for the kids. And I'm not, I know that I don't have any legal standpoint to say that this is breaking any violations, any legal codes. Um, the EIR shows that as well, but I will say that if this does get approved, at least, please, I urge you, do not allow the, uh, sale of liquor. Um, that is one thing that I feel like you have, you know, a great control over and I just, we, we really urge that from the district's standpoint. So, thank you.
Thank you. Gabrielle Sibley, followed by Linda Gilbert Williams.
Good evening, council. My name is Gabrielle Sibley. My address is on public record and, um, I have a granddaughter goes to the school down the street. And there's a lot of kids riding bikes and they don't even recognize the traffic sometimes. That's going to be a big problem if you do get the service station and you do get the convenience store. I hope that you think about this because I feel like the kids are very important. We need to think about them before something happens. And also the park, there's a lot of undesirables hanging out at that park. I come through there every day when I take my kid to school and back. And they're doing things they shouldn't do, doing drugs now with the liquor store and the convenience, um, with the convenience store there. The kids can get it from someone else. I seen it happen and we don't need them hanging out. They hang out at the park now and this is not conducive. And for the poor homeowners, I don't think it's right. And, um, there should be rezoning on that. I don't think that the station should be close to the homes. We have enough stations and I think most of us do go to Costco and Sam's Club to begin with. Am I right? We do not need that station. So please, please hear me out and think about it. Let your conscience be your guide. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you. Linda Gilbert Williams, followed by Regina Maoria.
My name is Linda Gilbert Williams. My address is one-five-two-nine-nine La Palma Way, Moreno Valley, California, nine-two-five-five. I'm here to represent, uh, the project, uh, I'm against it as a resident and also as a teacher here in the community. I'm concerned about the sale of the alcohol more than anything. Um, the kids, as you know, like someone said, will be getting it from people that will buy it for them. It's, I mean, it's a known fact. That's just my, you know, my concern. So please consider that.
Thank you. Regina Maoria, followed by Luis Quijada.
Good evening, members of the board and fellow neighbors. For, I, like many of our neighbors, I oppose to the project of this building of the gas station as well as the food. Those two items should not be combined within the same area because of such firms. Also, this project will have a negative impact, uh, on our community by, by building said gas station. It will bring invitations and open invitation to drug dealing, to a lot of other unsolicited and unwarranted activities that will jeopardize the well-being of our kids. Now, we have to think about what is for and in the best interest of our kids mainly, okay? Yes, the, this project, as stated before, it states, the builder stated, I'm, this is my property. I'm able to build whatever I want. And yeah, he's right. However, if it is, and as long as it's not in the violation of any one of our rights, he's able to do that. In which case, he's already in violation of our rights as the proposed gas station is going to be built. Now, we're going to lose our peace and tranquility. We're going to lose, we're going to lose so much more. Most of us moved away from the city to this area. Now, this project is bringing the city to us. Now, he said that he's doing what is best for this community and to bring open jobs and what have you. However, the community, we as a community, do not want this project. We can welcome other things, many things that could be beneficial to our children and the community. We have other grocery stores nearby. We have Stater Brothers. We have other things and the gas station is not that far. Now, building a wall, it's an open area. The project is not going to be enclosed. Thereby, the nose reduction by any wall will not be controlled. And not to say the traffic, the noise, everything else. Please reconsider our request and hear our voices as the community does not want this project. But we are able to, I'm sure, welcome any other project that will not disturb our peace and tranquility. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenny Glacius, followed by Luis Quijada.
Hello, I'm Kenny Lethius. And my address is in past city council meetings. When I first heard about this project, I was not sure, but after hearing fellow residents, I'm against the project. I would like my, maybe to see better like a, maybe a mini shopping center where the stores are all the way close to the sidewalk and you enter from like the sidewalk area. It might be a nice food place in the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Luis Quijada.
Good evening. My name is Luis. And I am concerned as a homeowner regarding this proposed gas station in our community. The developer has claimed that this development will generate two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand of tax revenue to the city. This will not be enough to cover not, not even one police officer with benefits and overtime. Our police force is already depleted. We as homeowners generate more tax revenue for the city. A gas station, convenience store is a magnet for the increase in crime regardless if you sell alcohol or not. We already have enough, if, we already have a huge problem with crime in this city. We have suggested a developer for other alternatives such as a bank, medical clinic, a restaurant, insurance agency, real estate office, yogurt shop, ice cream shop, barber shop, something that will benefit the community. And the list goes on. We need businesses that can close their doors no later than eight P M. We don't need a gas station to open twenty-four-seven. I oppose this project. Please vote no on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Angelica Arena, followed by Peter Weisler.
Good evening. My name is Angelica and I live at one-five-four-one La Casa Drive. I am extremely concerned with the gas station and the convenience store proposed in my community. Is, it is an irrational idea to build a business with extreme proximity to schools, homes and parks. The gas station convenience store don't attract the best people whether there is alcohol or not. It is a petri dish, dish for increased drugs, vandalism, crime, burglary, assaults. Therefore creating a dangerous, unsafe and hostile environment for residents and children. We have two parks, Fairway and Celebration. Both have become a hosting ground for drugs, alcohol, sex and homeless individuals. Children from La Jolla Elementary and Landmark Middle School walk to from, school, walk to and from school on their own by, by the Fairway Park and the proposed site for the gas station. With the apartments being built on the other side of Moreno Beach Drive, there will be more children walking and crossing the street to and from school. Children will be at risk by shady characters. Hanging at the gas station and at the park, offering drugs, alcohol, cigarettes, being harassed and assaulted. I personally have witnessed children being harassed. I have witnessed the alcohol consumption, the drug use that is currently taking place in this area. For Mr. Karaki to stand up here and say that we had agreed to certain things, that is a total lie. We never agree with him. We totally opposed it on the meeting we had with him. And his security guard will not be our babysitter. The developer also claimed that Councilman Cabrera had told them that the homeowners approved the project. Councilman Cabrera denies ever mentioning this to the developer. Our homes are our biggest financial investment. We move into this community because we like the appeal. I personally have, this is our fifth home. We have investments here besides our home. But our more precious investment are our children. We want them to grow up in a safe environment without the risks and the danger that our youth are exposed to in today's world. I ask you, isn't it our responsibility as adults to protect our children from harm? Are we going to fail them? I oppose this project. Please vote no.
Thank you. Peter Weisler, followed by Jose Guzman.
Hi, my name is Peter Weisler, at one-five-three-five-five La Casa Drive. I'm opposed to the gas station being built in my neighborhood. I've lived there for five years. It's a great neighborhood. My daughter goes to the junior high school that's around the corner from that. That is a very bad deterrent over there. There's no gas station that needs to be over there. Also, if, he hasn't mentioned, there's going to be a boys' and girls' club that's going to be built across the street from where the proposed gas station is. That's very hazardous. We have parks. Our kids walk to school. We want to make them safe. They are our, our future. Not a gas station. If you've been to the Chevron that's down the street from us, you should see the amount of liquor they have in there. It's more than Stater Brothers. It's ridiculous. The kind of people it attracts, it is terrible. I want you guys to please reconsider and vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Guzman, followed by Moises Santiago.
Good evening, members. Uh, my name is Jose Guzman. Uh, uh, I also live in La Casa Drive. So, uh, one of my concerns is the gas, uh, gas station. Um, I got my daughter, same as my neighbors. They go to the same school. Um, they're going to be walking home. A lot of homeless people, crime. And I moved to that neighborhood because it's beautiful and I wanted to stay that way. You know, I've been living there for the past ten years and I've been so happy there and I don't want to move, you know? So reconsider and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Santiago, followed by Rhonda Bogan.
Uh, good evening. My name is Moises Santiago. I live in, uh, one-five-three-five-six La Casa Drive. Um, I mentioned, uh, the traffic flow. There wasn't going to be a lot of traffic in that area. Um, say the gas station was, or that, the gas station was going to be for, uh, locals, but we have the lake nearby. Um, and locals, not just locals, go to that lake. They come from all over. Um, I know also, um, by coming down, they're going to be taking shortcuts, coming down, uh, Via de Lago, making a ride on La Casa Drive to make a shortcut into the gas station. Um, and I know there's going to be a lot of traffic. Um, I'm against the gas station. Um, please vote no.
Thank you. Rhonda Bogan, followed by Eric Bogan.
Oh, Lord, for shorter people. Um, good evening. My name is Rhonda. Let me stop and speak in the mic. My name is Rhonda Bogan and I live on La Casa Drive in Moreno Valley, California. Um, I will quickly, I guess, read what, you know, I'll first go over. I know this is not a case. However, um, when you speak of individuals coming into our community, you do want to make sure they're a credible person and as far as business practices. And I can already state the gentleman who is the developer, um, has already contradicted a few things in his statements. For one, um, he stated that the, he spoke with the councilman, which was incorrect. Um, he also informed us that he's here for the community. However, he contradicted that by stating, um, we could put our money forward to buy something else and that he's putting a gas station and without a compelling reason, his gas station would be moving forward. Um, now I'm going to go with what I wrote, what I sent over. Not sure if you guys will have a chance to read over the three hundred, I'm sorry, five hundred messages you received. So I briefly stated, I'm sending this email, well, I sent an email, but I'm speaking in front of you to all stakeholders and representatives involved in this matter. I'm here to express, of course, my opposition. I am against the gas station, um, gas station slash car wash slash liquor store project. Um, I speak on behalf of myself and my direct neighbor when I say that we are opposed to having a gas station on the corner of our block. The gas station is adjacent to a property. We currently live in a relatively safe neighborhood and are not willing to allow a gas station to jeopardize our safety. A gas station has the potential to bring criminal activity, homeless individuals, safety hazards to residents and unsafe environments for our students who attend the local junior high school, which is less than two miles away. In addition to these compelling reasons, um, as a homeowner, a gas station has the potential to decrease the market value of our property and all the homes in our area. So I am thus asking, anyone with the ability to stop this project, to please act and preserve our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Bogan, followed by Rose Baldwin.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Eric Bogan. I'm a resident, uh, within the neighborhood and, um, we've all brought up very, very excellent points. Um, the one that, um, disturbs me um, in great detail outside of, um, obviously, um, what it may attract to our, to our neighborhood, um, is the, uh, the transportation. Um, I don't know if you visit our area very much, but, um, the only, their closest gas station is the Chevron located on Alessandro and Moreno Beach. Uh, on the weekends, it's impacted with visitors from all over, uh, visiting Paris Lake. Uh, people bringing their boats. Um, and that's, and gassing up right there, um, as, as prior to going to the park. Um, if your goal is to install a gas station closer to the park, closer to Paris Lake, excuse me, um, it's my fear that that's where most of the traffic is now going to transfer to. Um, thus, more traffic, um, you're going to have individuals, uh, taking shortcuts through our neighborhood, um, down our street, making a left up and going across Moreno Beach into Paris Lake. Um, that's, that's one major, major concern. Um, that gas station on Alessandro and Moreno Beach is twenty, it's a twenty-four-hour liquor, yeah. Um, if you have an opportunity to go there late at night, I encourage you to, to do so. Because what you may see is, um, a shift of the individuals that go there will be coming one block down and going to what he's proposing, the, the gas station there. So, um, that's pretty much all I have to say. Just please consider and I, uh, I oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose Baldwin, followed by Henry Cho. Cho.
Good evening. My name is Rose Baldwin and as you know, I live in the vicinity of the proposed project on Championship Drive. I want to thank you for your time and listening to all of our concerns and hopefully voting no on this proposed project. no on this proposed project. I wanna point out some serious facts that are actually from very good sources. The environmental and health hazards proposed by gas stations, according to the American Journal of Public Health, significant health hazards are directly associated with residential proximity to gas stations, contributing to poorer health and disproportionate health outcomes, including asthma in children, childhood cancer, cardiovascular illness, end-stage renal disease, and diabetes, all relating to living within the proximity of a gas station within 1,000 feet, which this project is much closer than that. Because of high traffic volume and refueling, gas stations pose a serious threat to ground and surface water. I'm not sure anyone knows that. One study is done by the Environmental Protection Agency showed that contaminant levels in gas stations is more than 30% higher than residential water runoff, many of the pollutants related to increased cancer exposure in human beings. Anyone who's ever pumped their own gas downwind of the tank knows how fumes linger, contaminating the air with potential health hazards. These airborne toxic chemicals, which include benzene and hexane, come from unburned fuel evaporating during the refilling of a station's fuel tanks, automobile filling, and spillage. No wall is going to prevent that. Additionally, according to the prestigious Journal of Scientific America, "Gas stations are the source of significant peril to neighbors and especially children due to ground-level ozone and groundwater hazards from leaking petroleum products, which can also adversely affect our drinking water." Ozone pollution is caused by a mixture of volatile organic compounds from gasoline vapors, car exhaust, creating nearly odorous hydrocarbon fumes, which contain the harmful chemicals which cause cancer. Due to these concerns, the California Air Resource Board for the state recommends that gas stations be built a minimum of 300-feet distance from schools, parks, children's play areas, and residents, with a preference of at least 1,000 feet, to prevent the exposure from high-volume stations, which this will be. The chances are huge that our children will suffer daily exposure to these chemical hazards created by the gas station. The nearest schools, the children will pass right by it, at least twice per day. Landmark Middle School and Ridgecrest Elementary are within half a mile of this proposed site and La Jolla Elementary is seven tenths of a mile away. The adverse society effects on our society-
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
Okay, well, I wanna state also, I sent this to you and it is important that all of you read this. And if this developer has stated a lot of falsehoods in that meeting, that was last weekend-
Thank you.
-and you'll find that. And if he has so much support, where are his supporters tonight? Because we're not in support of it.
Good evening. My name is Henry Cho and I live on 15288 La Casa Drive and I have lived there since we moved in, since, I guess, they let people start moving in, it's been about 13 years. And I just have to say that, you know, in life, things are, you know, nothing comes without cost, but when it comes to something like this, we have to ask ourselves, you know, what are the costs and what are the benefits? And, you know, as far as the benefits, he's brought up tax money and he's brought up the benefits for our community, but our benefit, our community has already decided that it is not much of a benefit. So then we have to ask ourselves, what is the cost? And the cost is to us, the residents that live there. And, you know, if there is any negative repercussions, it will affect us. It won't affect you guys, it won't affect the developer, it's gonna affect us. So when making this decision, I just hope you guys consider the residents and the people of the community and I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Raymond Talbot, I live at 15441 La Casa Drive, have lived there since 2005, moved there for all the reasons other people have expressed, have the same sort of disappointments in this project that other people have expressed. So I have nothing new on certain topics that have been reiterated over and over, but I do have some specific points that I'd like to bring to your attention. The $250,000 or so thousand worth of tax revenue that may come from this is stuff which is simply cannibalized from other locations in Moreno Beach. Every gallon of gas sold there is one that's not sold down the street. So there will be no net tax revenue to the city. So as the city is concerned about bringing tax revenue into the city, I suggest that you focus on bringing businesses into the city that do bring people into the city to spend money, such as the golf course. Bring in businesses which cause people to spend their money locally instead of going to Orange County to the beach or out to Palm Springs to play golf. So that's one matter, that's a financial matter. Within the realm of folks affected by this, there's easily well over half a million to a million or even more dollars' worth of tax revenue that we generate and we would appreciate your paying attention to us. On the traffic study, the traffic study, I'm afraid, has it sort of both ways. It says lots of places in words that there's no significant impact on the traffic, yet there are tables in there that very explicitly state, and I'll just use one road, the portion of Moreno Beach Drive coming from the south towards this intersection. It states, "Without the proposed site, there will be 15,900 trips per day in the year 20, it's either 2020 or 2022." It states that with the project, there will be 16,700 trips per day. That's 800 more trips per day. That's roughly a 5% increase in number of trips per day. It also predicts twice that many trips on the north side going from JFK North. So there are traffic impacts in their tables, not in their words. There's another point that I would like to make is a disappointment in the report. It goes to great lengths to discuss the value of vistas in Moreno Valley. It states, "The project would not block any views of hills, mountain tops viewed from Moreno Beach Drive or elsewhere on the site." So if you're on the site, your views are not blocked. Wonderful, I'm pumping gas and I can see the views. If I'm driving down Moreno Beach Drive, my views are not blocked. But if I'm on my street, La Casa Drive, or Via Sonata where these folks live, our views are blocked and the report does not address us. Thank you.
Belinda Martin, followed by Leanna Gonzalez.
Good afternoon. I'm Belinda Martin. My address is 15128 La Casa Drive. I purchased my home 10 years ago. I have a beautiful home. I invested a lot of money into my home, as well as my neighbors. We have a very proud community. He's not serving our community, he's serving himself. Six-mile radius from the freeway to Paris Boulevard, we have three gas stations. We have 11 existing establishments that sells alcohol. We have six strip malls that have plenty of coffee shops, cleaners, hair salons, nail shops, donut shops, and plenty of fast food. We have Walmart, we have CVS. Our community is already well-served with businesses. We welcome him, but we don't need what he's offering us, we already have it. I would ask that, if you haven't been to our community, stand in that lot and see how encroached he is on our property. He is, I mean, I can understand if we had a buffer, we have absolutely no buffer. And to look at it, to take our serenity, to look at a gas station, noise, one motorcycle, one Harley-Davidson, just is enough going down Moreno Beach. But just to have a gas station 24 hours, seven days a week, 365 days, the park, I walk, I walk, the park is already becoming challenging with the weed smokers. The Via Entrada has become a truck stop for big rigs with some stuff going on in them trucks. We're already fighting just to keep our neighborhood serenity for us. We are so proud of our neighborhood and we don't want it to turn into some of the other neighborhoods in Moreno Valley. He's coming down from Orange County and he's serving us. Thank you for coming to little old Moreno Valley and giving us your business, but we don't want it. We want, we don't want that business. We want something else, something that serves us, not something that we already have in a six-mile radius. Thank you.
Thank you. Leanna Gonzalez, followed by Cory Joseph.
Hello, everyone. Just wanted to introduce myself, I'm Leanna Gonzalez, I live on Adobe Way. I just wanted to bring my son and obviously saw my daughter. I jog almost every other day around Moreno Beach, JFK, just passing that empty lot, the parks, everything. There's parked cars, people sitting in there, smoking pot, cigarettes. It's close enough to all the parks we have with our children. If you're adding another convenience store, gas station, that's gonna attract more people to purchase cigarettes, alcohol, to be around our children. We don't want that. So I just wanna say, I am here to oppose this gas station liquor store. Thank you.
Thank you. Cory Joseph.
Hello, everyone. I'm Cory Joseph. I live on Rancho Baja and I oppose the gas station as well. I've also witnessed marijuana smoking at the park. It's horrible. My husband, he used to go to work at 4:00 in the morning, he was at Chevron and witnessed a woman being beat and the police never showed up. So I've waited for the police over two hours. The police department closes at 5:00. So how can they actually watch over what's going on in our neighborhood? It's, it's impossible. They talked about how much, how much it costs to pay a police officer for the year. They talked about, you know, putting a security guard here, but we can't even police the, the neighborhood with the police department that we have now. I went to the police department and found out it closed at 5:00. I was, I was done. How did the police office close at 5:00? You know, then you wanna put a gas station here and bring in more riffraff, 'cause that's all that it's gonna bring is riffraff. People, you heard, we were sitting right here and you heard the noise going down the street right here with the loud music. We had a meeting and the cars were driving up and down the street with the loud noise. So I, I moved out here for peace and I don't, I don't, I don't think that that's gonna bring it. So I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete Hurtado, followed by Elmer and Karen Benitez.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Pete Hurtado, live in La Casa Drive. I'm just gonna point out, do a couple of things. I'm gonna show, speak about some news articles that I pulled up, the headlines, and then I'm gonna jump into some statistics that I pulled from crimereports.com in a seven-month period. So I'm gonna start off with the news reports. Man shot to death at 76th gas station at a busy riverside intersection. Riverside police arrests three in fatal shooting behind gas station. Man gets life in prison for deadly riverside gas station shooting. Three deny killing transient in gang-related shooting at a 76th gas station in Riverside. Now I'm gonna talk about, five gas stations are within our area and I'm gonna tell the names and the locations and the incidents that occurred in those locations. First one is Eastern Market in Redlands and Alessandro, two thefts. Chevron located in Moreno Beach, Alessandro, two thefts and four assaults. AMPM Moreno Beach and Eucalyptus, eight thefts and four assaults. AMPM Paris and Cremaria, 16 thefts and four assaults. And the best one of all, Chevron, I mean Shell, Iris and Paris, 12 drug incidents, 12 assault incidents, 78 incidents of death. Ladies and gentlemen, what I'm trying to prove here is that a gas station and convenience store is synonymous with the word crime. Now I ask you, who is gonna bear the responsibility of something happening to either a local resident or, in, in the worst case, a child? Please, I ask you to listen to the people that are living within feet of this proposed establishment. I'm asking you to reconsider and, and instead of looking at the surface, I'm asking you to look deeper. Look at the potential, what could possibly happen, just because we, you know, wanted to give one, one person a chance to open this business that we really don't need, that doesn't even live in the area, that is now gonna affect everybody in the community. So I oppose this project and I urge and I plead with you to please vote no.
Thank you. Elmer and Karen Benitez, followed by Rafael Brugeras.
My name is Karen Benitez. I also live in La Casa Drive. My husband and I, we moved to Moreno Valley same, same year as my neighbors. We, we come from Orange County and we're tired of the noise and crowded places, traffic. And now we think that building this Chevron or, you know, gas station slash the convenience store is gonna bring more traffic and like everybody said, they're gonna use our street, La Casa Drive, as a shortcut to the lake. I'm thinking summertime is gonna be the craziest time of the year because everybody from LA come, not only the, the riverside area, but LA is gonna come and, and go to the lake and they're gonna use that, you know, gas station. So my kids are already grown up. I like the, the idea of moving to Moreno Valley because of the peace and quiet. So I oppose to the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Rafael Brugeras, followed by Mike Panzana.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, Staff, Residents, and Guests. This reminds me of a case that we had about a year ago that the developer, the epic had good intentions and that was up the hill on Ironwood. He wanted to put a nursing home in the middle of the block and Barnes was there, Baker was there, and Ms. Costa was there. And, and you're, you know already the outturn of the vote there, so think about that, 'cause that might just happen tonight again. The same idea, the same thought may come up again. The developer talked about a lot of things up there, but he wasn't truthful because there was ambulance, police car, everything was gonna go up there in the middle of the block on Ironwood, one of the hills up there. I'm not saying that he's not telling the truth, but I'm gonna tell you what happens when you have gas stations and we all go to gas stations. Some are prettier than others and some are the worst. The one, especially the one on Iris and that Chevron, it's, it's, it's the pits there, you know what I'm saying? Okay, with that, when you have a gas station with a car wash, the vacuum cleaners come on, the blowers come on, the doors slam, the trucks doors slam, and there's music, okay? Vendors come at all different hours probably. And it's true, we all at one time spill gas on the turf and what cleans it up after that? The rain comes in and throws it right back into the street. You know that and I know, everybody's done that accidentally, let's say accidentally, But it's true, there is vibration. I don't care what car you drive, and I drive a Harley, you don't wanna hear my Harley, I got a mean Harley. I know I can pump and you'll hear it. And I don't wanna do that to somebody 11 o'clock at night. Think about that, 11 o'clock at night, you're trying to go to bed and you got 24-hour lights on. I like the project, believe me, I do, and I'm proactive of development. I like the project. It's a world big project and I looked at everything. I mean, I looked at the staff report, I read all 994 pages, I looked at everything. But it reminds me of that case, the wrong place. It's the wrong place. I went up and down that block five times and I went around the whole neighborhood and I thought about those people with all those lights like Chevron on all night long. It's a beautiful project if it was on Cactus and Moreno Beach, across the street from everything else. That's where it belongs.
Thank you, Mr. Brugeras. Mike- Mike Bunthanam?
Good evening. I'm Mike Bunthanam. I live off of 15209 La Casa Drive. I'm against this project that's going on. My kids walk to school every morning, and I go to work before them, so I want to make sure that they're at school safe as they're walking. I don't want this gas station to attract more people to come over and race, because we have people racing in the middle of the night already. People is going to be speeding, and I just want to make sure that this is a safe environment for everybody, our community, and pretty much that's it. I'm just against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alfred Lopez, followed by Leo Gonzalez.
Good evening, members of the council. My name's Alfredo Lopez Jr. I live on Legendary Drive, and it's just less than half a mile away from the proposed project. Bought this house maybe four years ago. Love it here. Love the way it looks. And one of the first things that came up when we were just walking the neighborhood was this area that they're proposing to put this gas station. We walk all the way down to, I want to say JFK, all the way up the hill and all the way back. That's where me and my wife walk, and they had different signs up. One was a gas station a couple of years ago, and right now there's a deceptive sign that shows like a small little convenience, not a convenience store area, but small shops. And it's deceptive because it's not a gas station. And now, all of a sudden, I just found out about this maybe less than a week ago. And now they're going to put a gas station, and the environmental impacts of that is... I'm a truck driver, and I go to gas stations sometimes and just to refill the tanks at night. They're going to come in in the middle of the night. They're going to come in at four o'clock in the morning, and the big rig is loud. I mean, you're talking about all these impacts and the noise decibels and all that, but I don't know when they're listening to it, but it's not when it's as loud as it can be. It's going to be loud. Not to mention Moreno Beach, it's a pretty well-trafficked area. I mean, the speed limit's 50 miles per hour, but cars are going well above 50 most of the time. And imagine a car just careening into that gas station, hitting a pump and starting a fire. There's homes right there. My home is in jeopardy right there. I don't want this project. I'm totally against it. I hope that you guys are listening to the people that actually live there and just take our voices into account. We're the ones that are going to suffer if something happens. And so I want to leave it like that, and thank you for listening to me. And please take into account that everything that we're saying. But I'm opposed, if you haven't guessed. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Leo Gonzalez.
Well, I'm no mathematician, but I think it might be a clean slate. I don't think anybody has spoken for the project. Here's, I got a couple of contentions with this project, and I do have a little bit of a bona pick with the planning commission, because last week there was a 7-0 vote to approve apartments. Now, if you guys, I'm going to address the audience here for a second. While out-of-town developers come into this city and get green lights to rezone, making their properties worth a lot more, get entitlements for gas stations or whatever it is that they're opposing. Meanwhile, the stakeholders, the main stakeholders in this community, they're called homeowners. Their property values are getting devalued while out-of-town developers are getting their property values increased because of the decisions that this planning commission and maybe city council might approve next week. It's not, it's done. There's no negotiating. The narrative that's been fed to the residents is, oh, let's negotiate. Oh, let's get something. You guys get something, we get something. That was the narrative of the community meeting. Now, I find that interesting. This project was on the planning commission on the 12th, the same day that the apartments, the apartments get voted in. All of a sudden, a year later, after negotiating with city staff, all of a sudden, the developer that's in this room now cares about the community. He's had a year. He's had a year. That's not somebody who cares about the community. That's somebody who's trying to weasel their way into the community and try to... I'll make it short. To hell with the promises, to hell with mitigating measures. There's no compromise. Today, there is a new leaf that will be turned in Moreno Valley, and we're going to stop catering. The residents here will stop catering to out-of-town developers, period.
Thank you. Seeing no additional speakers on the list, we will close the public hearing. All right. Are you on the list, sir?
My wife pushed me up here.
Go ahead.
You heard from Rose Baldwin a little while ago. We live on Championship Drive, and thank you for indulging me at this time for not having signed a grain slip. As a matter of one issue, if I can address it, may not have been touched upon, and that is the convenience store is not convenient to anybody. For one thing, when you talk about the store, the convenience store and the gas station that is located on Moreno Beach and Alessandro, is a three-minute drive from this project. They have a full liquor license. That particular project, that particular gas station is surrounded by empty fields. This project being proposed is surrounded by nothing but residential neighborhoods. From the standpoint of potential crime, the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health has come up with a study that indicates that there's only one cohort of employees who are more subject to homicide than taxi cab drivers. You know what they are? They're gas station employees. And how are they killed? They're not killed by straws thrown at them at the convenience store. Obviously, they're using vicious weaponry, and our kids are going to be exposed to that. One of the things that was brought up about the kids, too, that I want to try to emphasize, if I may, and again, I appreciate your indulgence, and that is the fact that the kids are not only going to be walking by this gas station, they're going to be coming into the gas station. So all of those hazards that we were talking about before, the benzene and hexane and all that sort of things, they're going to be even closer to exposure when they go into those convenience stores. And obviously, they're enticed to go there because there's a Jersey Mike's, there's a restaurant, there's a convenience store with candy in it. There was a study done by the Federal Housing Administration that shows that there was a lowering of property values in the locale of gas stations by as much as 30%. My wife pulled up one the other day, too, that I'd like to give you, and perhaps the last fact you'll probably hear today on this from anybody out there in the community, anyway, and that is that the F A H A insurance is not available for homes that are located within 500 feet of gas tanks that are capable of 1,000 gallons or more. They can't get insurance. Finally, I'd like to reiterate what was said by a fellow a few moments ago, and that is, when you drive by the site that's proposed right now, you take a look at the billboard. And the billboard does show some sort of a convenience center. It shows nothing about a gas station. When the developer was confronted with that particular information last Saturday at a meeting I attended, he had no good answer for it. Please vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. With that, we will close the public hearing and deliberate.
You need to possibly invite the applicant back up.
Thank you. Apologies, Rick. Would the applicant like to step forward and make any comments prior to closing the public hearing? All right. Thank you very much. With that, we will close the public hearing and deliberate. Any comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. Thank you all for speaking. Looked like over 30 people spoke. It looks like everybody lives so close together or in the same house. I think my comment would be this, is that liquor stores, gas stations, convenience stores, restaurants, at some point, they all get robbed. With the park being so close and the school being so close, a potential robber is going to want to go somewhere. They're going to run. And if the park is full of kids or if the school is in session, that is a possibility that that robber may go into that school site or into somebody's home. It will get robbed. It just brings up a concern of mine. However, on another point, I do say that it is zoned for commercial, and something will go there eventually. So again, I just thank everybody for bringing their concerns. I appreciate your courage to step up here and say the things that you say, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
As a commissioner, I think we also have to weigh a lot of things. And to me, quality of life is really important to me from Moreno Valley. Granted, this gentleman has a property. He has a right to build something commercial on it. But I think the overriding feeling of tonight is that the community is not against a commercial development there, but that this is the wrong job for the site and that it puts our children at risk. And I'm impressed with, I heard a little bit about property values, but I also heard about the concern for the children, and that is the future of this community. And so I applaud everyone for coming tonight, raising these questions. It is a difficult decision for us, but to me, it's always quality of life is what I really want to focus on and bring into the commission.
Anyone else?
Yes, I just would like to say, 30 people that came up to the podium, they were all against what was going to happen there. So I think I'll have to go along with how the people feel.
I appreciate everybody coming out. They came out for the last project, and I'm really sorry that one of the people up at the podium wasn't in favor of what we did last week as a commission, but we do listen to the residents, and we did listen to the residents last week, and we're listening to you, because this is your place where you live. And it is true that, at the end of the day, you will have to live with that. And so we do listen to you. So it's not like we make a decision just based on a developer. We do make a decision based on the community that is going to be there. Now, the project is a nice project, but as far as I'm concerned, it's in the wrong place. It would be in the wrong place.
Well, we seem to be moving towards a consensus. I'd like to make a couple of comments, more specifically to the staff as to this particular project and the way it's configured. It was mentioned during the staff report that this was considered a neighborhood project, and that's why there was no wall or no separation between this property and the adjacent residences. But in my mind, a gas station, which you obviously have to drive to, isn't necessarily a walking activity. You're going to drive to it, so regardless of the uses, I would have had issues with the fact that there isn't enough buffer between the residences and the commercial property. If there is sufficient space, I would have thought a larger landscape setback and a wall to make the project front towards Moreno Beach and have its emphasis in that direction and downplay the rear and the south side. That would have been my preference. I also have issues with the car wash. Those would have been my primary objections, so... With that said, anyone else want to make a comment? If not, I think a motion might be in order. All right. Anyone have any more comments? I think we need to either comment or move. All right. With no one willing to make a motion, I, as soon as I find the right page, will move that the planning commission... And what's the proper term, Paul? Deny?
Yes, because the resolutions before you were projecting an approval. If there's a motion to deny the proposed application, that's probably all that you would need to do at this time. The staff would be taking your deliberation and comments into consideration. We'll come back to you at the next meeting with a new resolution, formally denying it based on the reasons that you set forth in your deliberation, so that we have a written record of that denial.
All right, thank you. So with that, I will make a motion that we deny resolution...
No, just deny the proposed application.
Just deny the proposed application. Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, and direct staff to return with a new resolution.
And what he said. Thanks, Paul. A second? A second from Commissioner Baker. Yes, we're voting to deny the application. Is this right, Ashley?
Yes.
All right, the motion to deny carries six to zero. With that, I would like to take a five-minute recess, so we will be back in five. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. My apologies to the staff at the conclusion of the previous item. I should have asked for a staff report or a follow-up, wrap-up. Thank you.
Yes, Chair, this item is, your decision is final. The only way to be going to city council is based on appeal.
Well, actually, let me clarify one thing. Because your action still requires us to come back with a resolution of denial, I did have a conversation with the applicant after the meeting. The actual process will be for us to come back with that resolution. The commission will vote on that resolution at that point. If it continues in the fashion that it was this evening, then that will start a 15-day appeal period. And then during that 15-day appeal period, if somebody was inclined to want to appeal, they could appeal it then. That would get it to the city council. There's no appeal until your actual action on May 24th at this point. So Albert's correct, except for that we've got to wait a month till we get there.
Right, got it. Okay. Thanks very much, and again, my apologies for skipping that step. With that, we will move to item two on tonight's agenda, which... City Moreno Valley is the applicant, and the proposal is an amendment to the city's temporary use permit regulations. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Chair Barnes. Claudia Menrique will be presenting the staff report.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Claudia Menrique. I'm the project planner for this proposal, which is an amendment to the city's existing conditional temporary use permit, the T U P regulations, which is in Chapter Nine, Section 9.02150 of the code. And it consists of adding fireworks sales to the existing list of temporary uses in the table. the table. And this table will also reflect that firework sales are further regulated by Title XI, Chapter XI.22, and that the TUPs for firework sales will only be in commercial districts. This amendment was found to be categorically exempt under SEQA Section 15304. It was published in the Press Enterprise on April 15th. As of tonight, I've had fifteen emails against and one for adding firework sales to the temporary use table, and staff recommends that the planning commission takes the recommended actions as proposed by staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair, if I might add to that, just a brief, a little bit here. There seems to be some confusion about exactly what's proposed and what's before the commission tonight, from what I've heard, so I just want to make sure that everybody understood exactly what that is. The commission is not deciding whether or not to allow firework sale in the city. That issue is being drafted and brought to the council for a future meeting. What's before us tonight is, if the council were to decide to allow firework sales in the city, and the regulations that all relate to that, what is the appropriate process used to permit those sales? And staff is recommending that we use the temporary use permit system that we already have in place for that. So we're only discussing whether or not, if the council allows firework sales, is the temporary use permit the proper tool, and are commercial districts the proper location? Whether or not we have sales, what types of fireworks are sold, what hours they're sold at, what the conditions for using them are, all of that is not before the commission. That is a separate item that will go before council.
Thank you for that clarification. That probably will alter the discussion a little.[726.41][726.41](LAUGHING).
I had a feeling that...
Well, that being the case, what are the alternatives to the temporary use permit?
The city could adopt a completely independent permitting scheme. We've done that for other regulated businesses. However, because we're talking about site locations and land use for where these stands would be located, it seemed to staff that this was most closely akin to, and very similar to, a Christmas tree sale lot, or a pumpkin lot, or those types of uses for which we already have that process in place. So, they would have to comply with all the regulations of any proposed fireworks ordinance, which is what would come to council later, but internally, when they make that application, the process that's being proposed to be used is the TUP process, which already has its own set of fees established, its own processes established, and because it's in the zoning code in Title IX, it comes to this body for a recommendation before it goes to council.
Understand, thanks, Paul. All right, anybody have any questions?
So, basically, it's not gonna be like in shopping centers, or supermarkets, because I've lived in Orange County for a long time, and Anaheim allowed fireworks for a long time, and they used to have them almost everywhere. They had them where they had a small shopping center, supermarkets, so... I know the punk, you know, over there by the mall, they have that, but I mean, are they gonna have them in those type areas?
I can't say at this point where they're going to have them, because the council has not adopted those regulations. Those are the types of things that would be a part of that, any proposed regulation, along with the hours and other facilities, how they're operated. And I've seen some drafts of things going around, but what the council actually finally adopts, if they adopt anything, is up in the air. But because of the timing, and this needing a recommendation when it goes with the rest of the things, we need to get that recommendation, so at the same time that they're hearing these proposed things, it comes with a recommendation from the planning commission on whether or not we should modify the zoning code to use the TUP process to allow them. So, I can't really answer the question for you, because...
You don't know.
Those regulations aren't in place yet. However, the zones where it would be allowed are before you tonight, which I believe the language is "any commercial zone," but that will be further narrowed as far as specific locations go within that, but it will exclude the sale of fireworks in residential zones or other non-commercial zones.
Okay.
So, with that being said, will any part of this future process be coming back before us?
Not that I, I mean, I don't know what might be. If there's another change to the zoning code, yes. If the council were to say, "We'd like to see it," for example, "We'd like to see it in residential districts," and that's not, that would require a change to the zoning code, which would necessitate us to coming back to this board. But, as it's being proposed at this point, all we need is your recommendation on the change, whether to use this process or not.
So, the technical aspects of the TUP are all staff and council?
Right. All the TUP process says is that they need to comply with all the city's rules and regulations, and there would be a separate amendment to Title V, I believe, of our code, which would have all of those regulations in it. Like I said, the hours of operation, and all of those types of things.
Okay.
We're just, oh...[979.32][979.32](LAUGHING).
Go ahead.
Just jumping right in there. So we're simply just voting on whether to approve the zoning on it, right?
The zoning and using the TUP as the permit, rather than creating a new permit.
Okay.
The zoning and the mechanism.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, all right.
Well, I have a question, and it's probably not appropriate, but I'm not, I'm really not understanding. I'm looking at, there's 295 communities in the entire state that allow the sale of fireworks. That's not a lot of communities. In our own county, there's only five, and they're way out in the desert, Indio, Blythe, Cathedral City, Coachella. I guess I'm curious as to why I'm working on a mechanism when I'm not sure that we want to sell the fireworks. And at what point does that come before the community? If we say it's okay to zone it, then we kind, don't we kind of give them a little stamp of approval, whether we believe in the fireworks or not?
It will become before the community at a council meeting, because it's the council who will make those regulations and has the jurisdiction over that. Unless, like I said, unless there's a change to the proposed zoning, or other changes to the planning code. If this body, again, we're only making a recommendation to approve this change if the council approves fireworks. So, if they don't approve fireworks, this is moot. If they, if you don't recommend approval, they could still approve it anyway. If you don't recommend approval, and they don't want to be different from you, but still want fireworks, they would adopt an entirely new permitting, have to adopt an entirely new permitting scheme, which would require, you know, changes to how staff does things. So the only reason that staff is here with the recommendation is because staff doesn't want to have to create a new permitting process when one is already in place, should this be approved by the council. We're just adding this to the table of the TUP. This is not a recommendation from any staff here tonight, whether or not fireworks should be allowed or not. It's simply, if council adopts it, this is the process that we would like to use to implement it.
What's the fee structure of a TUP?
I'll defer to planning staff for that.
This would be what we would consider a major TUP, and it's $309 currently.
And that's it? It's a fixed amount? Okay.
Yes, and then there's additional costs for fire inspections.
Okay. And all that would be flushed out in the specifics of the ordinance, yeah. Okay. Well, that makes our tour pretty simple, yes.
On, in the packet, I assume that anything in the packet is fair game to question. On page, packet page 1015, item number three. And my profession was an emergency nurse, and so I just, I would like just somebody to, you know, I won't be so bold as to say that this is incorrect, but I would like somebody to review that this, and if you want, I can read it to you.
Staff is looking at it. I don't know if you want to read it for the public, so you know what we're talking about.
Chair and commissioners, this is the fact, or the language after the fact here is a SEQA finding regarding any changes to safety or welfare or public health that would be negative, the sale of safe and sane fireworks would have to be negative on the city, and the finding is determined there is not a potential for significant negative effects for the sale of that. The sale being the primary action, not the use or disposal somewhere else.
Okay, that the proposed use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare, or materially injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity.
Okay, so just for clarification, please remember, I think the city attorney was trying to clarify this as well. The action before you this evening is to allow for firework sales to be allowed as a temporary use. The actual use of fireworks, if that's your concern, after they're sold, if they're used, if that's a different condition, or if that's a safety concern, that's not what this finding is saying. This finding is saying us adding a temporary use to the table itself does not have the potential for the adverse impact.
Yes, I just didn't understand that. It sounded like it was saying that they were perfectly safe, and they weren't going to cause any harm, and...
It's...
No, and that's the clarification that I'm trying to make.
Activity, not what's being sold.
SEQA determination is about the addition of this to the permitting schedule. It's not about the use of fireworks. That determination would have to be made at the subsequent hearing with respect to that ordinance that allows fireworks. This action does not allow fireworks, and we're only talking about the permitting process.
I have a question that I actually think might really be pertinent to what we're doing, for the fire official. Does the TUP process afford you all the opportunities that you need to regulate this properly?
Yes, Adrian Reinsen, Fire Marshal. As Claudia said, there is an additional fee for fire inspection, so every time a TUP comes in, regardless of what it is, we analyze it to see if we need to do a fire inspection. Our rules and regulations for fireworks live in our California Code of Regulations, so those are already documented. It's just a matter of cost recovery to do the inspections.
Okay, so everything you need to do can be done under the TUP?
Yes.
And I would assume that the police activity is the same? So that was, would be my primary concern. So, if those things are met, if they can do everything they need to do to make the operation safe, then...
Just like to recommend, too, that this is still a public hearing, so we still need to go through all the same processes before we deliberate.
Ah, thank you. All right. That did kind of sound like deliberation, didn't it?[1417.51][1417.51](LAUGHING). All right, well, having concluded the staff report, do we have public speakers on this item? We do. Thanks, Paul. So I'd like to open the public comment portion. First speaker is Canaglazius, followed by Graham Baldwin.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff, and fellow residents. I said the commission should approve this sale of fireworks within the city, because if they don't approve it, people will still bring fireworks in here to the city, and we'll shoot them up to the sky to celebrate the Fourth of July, and to set an example that the government cannot tell them what to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Graham Baldwin.
Good evening again, Commissioners. I'm confused, just like you were a little while ago, Commissioner. It seems like we're putting the cart before the horse here. If I can use a very rough analogy, it would be like some higher authority being able to decide whether or not a certain activity is a crime, and then coming to you first before deciding if it's going to be a crime, what penalty you would recommend for that crime? It's all academic. My own suggestion would be very simply to place this in a ban until you find out what the City Council's going to do, if they're going to even allow the sale of fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you. Raymond Talbot. Lindsay Robinson to follow.
I was surprised and flabbergasted to even hear that the city is considering this type of sale. From what I understood, from the previous discussions that you were having with the staff, is that your job would be to control how they are sold, not whether or not they're sold. Whether or not they're sold will be the City Council. I'm pretty sure there will be many people at the City Council arguing that they should not be sold. My suggestion for your responsibility is to make the sale, should it be approved, that they can sell them. Your responsibility, I would hope, would be to make the sale so onerous that the sellers will decide not to even bother to come to Moreno Valley to sell them. We quite frankly have lots of problems with the illegal fireworks. I clean them up every holiday in my yard, from the neighbors who fire them off. We don't need more. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay Robinson. Lindsay appears to have left the building. All right? With that, we will close the public hearing and continue our deliberation.[1601.15][1601.15](LAUGHING). I think our job here is fairly straightforward. Anybody have any comments that would alter that, or impact that, or in any way?
You know, I just question if we pass this, is this not an implied thing that we are making, that we are okay with this? I don't know. I personally would rather see it come from City Council first, if they're going to do it or not, and then go to this step. I just fear that this isn't, that we imply that we go along with this. It's a hidden implication. Whether you go along with it, that's your own, you know. But for me, that, I just don't feel good about it.
I think that's a valid point, that it might be part of our responsibility to, after seeing what the council approves, then we determine how it'd be permitted. Because there is a potential that we see something in the regulation that we don't feel the TUP covers, and I can't imagine what that would be, but unintended consequences. Paul?
Yeah, just to give you a couple of alternatives here, as you're discussing this hearing, some of the things you're saying. Remember keeping in mind that it is just a recommendation, so even if you decide to recommend against it, there's nothing to stop the council, if they wanted to go forward with this, to say we're doing it anyway. The other thing is, because this was agendized for fireworks, there's nothing to stop you from making two motions on this matter tonight. One, expressing your disapproval of allowing firework sales in the city at all, and the second, saying if fireworks are approved ultimately by the City Council, that the, you know, the TUP method is the way we recommend going. So you do have some flexibility here. You can adopt both, and/or one, or the other, or whatever this commission feels. I just wanted to give you those options.
Well, I think the point that Commissioner Korzak's making is valid, that us acting on how something, an activity, is permitted is more appropriately done after we know what the activity is. You know? So, I see your point, and I tend to kind of agree, which means that if that were the action that we would take, I don't know that, I'm not looking to make a motion on the sale of fireworks necessarily, but I think the action that I might lean towards is postponing this activity until the commission acts. I'm sorry, the council, pardon me.
Question for staff.
Yes, yeah, and that's certainly something you can do, just know that it may Yes, yeah, and that's certainly something you can do, just know that it may never come back to you, even if the, if the Council does approve it, they don't have to send it back to you.
Right.
Yeah, that's, basically, they don't even really need us. That's what I'm hearing.
No, the, the code requires, the quote requires us to come to your...
That's what I'm hearing, I'm hearing whether or not, I don't want to interrupt you, but you're, it's, seems like you're saying, if, if they decide they're going to do it, they're going to do it, they don't really need...
They need your...
Regardless of our vote. We could vote all no.
Correct.
And it'll still go to the Council, and if the Council approves it, they're going to do it anyway. Is that what you're saying?
If the Council approves it, they have the choice whether to, to go against your recommendation, or to send it back to you for a new recommendation if something has changed, or they wanted something different, but they're not required to follow your recommendation.
Can I take a pause for a second and talk to the city attorney, and then I'll come back to you, just a second?
Okay.
Has to be in the public court.
The Community Development Director, we, we were just discussing the different methodology by which the plan, or the Council could take it up, and there are, there are different paths depending on your decision, but the ultimate outcome is still the same as what we were just discussing. If the Council wants to do this, despite your recommendation, it has the ability to do so. It's just the path that they follow, whether they take it up on appeal, or they, it's part of it, or it comes back to you, there's different ways it can get there.
They can basically override us.
At the end of the day, on this issue, yes.
Okay.
Rick? Do you, do you have any thoughts on what we've put forth, where, at least my position, based on what Commissioner Korzak has said, is that we're a little uncomfortable putting the cart before the horse. We're happy to act on the appropriate permitting mechanism, but it seems inappropriate to do that prior to knowing what we're permitting.
Okay, what, what, what you're, what you're, I think you have all the information you need to make, take the action. I don't think you're putting the cart before the horse. I think that what the, the process is saying is, there is an interest in the city at this point to allow a process for the sale of safe and sane fireworks, but in order to permit them, we want them to be permitted through a temporary use permit, which is a regulation that's set forth in the zoning code. And right now, we have things like the, the staff presentation mentioned, we have ways to do that for pumpkin patches, for Christmas tree sales, but we don't have anything that specifically talks about firework booths and these sorts of things. So what we're saying is, this type of a land use should get a, a, there should be a process, and that process that is recommended is a temporary use permit. Because it's a modification to the development code itself, it's a legislative action, so your decision tonight is not final, the final decision on making a, a law rests with the City Council. So your opinion or your action this evening is going to be carried forward to the City Council. The part that I was talking with the city attorney about is, in the procedures that are outlined in the, in the zoning code, it suggests to me that the action by the Planning Commission, if it is an action to deny the recommended action, would require an appeal to get to the City Council. It's just a procedural thing that, that Paul and I were discussing. It ultimately can get to the City Council, but there may be a step in there that says it has to be appealed to get there, and that's, that's what I was saying. But I don't think anything, the cart is not before the horse this evening. I think you're, you have all the information you need to take this action.
And it, and it doesn't even need to be appealed in the sense that the Council can take up an entirely new permitting scheme that doesn't need to go before this board. So the, the TUP process, the amendment to allow this as part of the TUP process, is to benefit staff, because if this, if this were to become a process, we have this, this process in place internally. If it doesn't go through the TUP process, it just means that we have to create a new process. To the vendor, they still have to apply, they still have to have fire inspections, everything has to happen, but we have to adopt new fee, a separate fee, a separate application, a different process outside of the development code.
I guess my, Commissioner Baker?
One question here, did we sell fireworks in town last year? I don't buy fireworks, so I don't know.
It's currently prohibited in the city. Yes, as of today, and for...
This is not new to generate cash, right, or...
No, the city would not be generating any money from this at all. All the fees would be simply to cover the cost of the inspections.
Okay, got it.
I guess my concern, based on what Commissioner Korzak brought up, is that once the regulation is crafted by the Council, could there be something in it that is so distasteful to us that we wouldn't want it to be a TUP? Maybe we want it to be a full-blown CUP? Because the regulation, as it's crafted, we find so bad. Is that...
The, the answer to that question is, if you don't believe that a TUP is the appropriate process, you could be recommending that it be a conditional use permit, yes. That, that, that's an option you can, in your recommendation, you could say, I think that a, a TUP is not the right process, a CUP would be the right process. We're not, we're not recommending that, but you're asking the question...
I understand, and given that we don't know what we're permitting, other than the generic sale of fireworks, and none of the details that go with it, am I making too big a deal out of this? You can tell me yes.
Well, I, maybe it's just because the, if you have limited information in front of you, what we're talking about, and the reason it's a TUP instead of a CUP, is it's a very temporary use, and it's, it's once per year during a very finite period of time between, maybe, do you remember, I'm sorry, what? June twenty-eighth and July fourth. That's the period of, that, that this is regulated by state law. So because it's a very narrow window of time on a very specific property that's, that's being approved, the CUP process is a little overkill for that, and it may affect other land use rights in longer term.
If I could also just speak to the, the TUP, the TUP, the TUP process gives the city the ability to evaluate a, a site plan, to evaluate the, in a, at least a considerate review, what the impacts to the city could be and how we could minimize it. There, there's just a process. It doesn't cost a significant amount of money, and, and, but it does allow us to review it. A conditional use permit would be thousands of dollars, and we're, what we're thinking is, these sorts of booths in most communities that do these, they're nonprofits that are, that are usually running these booths, to, to, to ask that sort of an entity to pay six thousand dollars, or ten thousand dollars, or more, to get a, a approved plan, and knowing that a CUP is also going to be a much more involved plan, that so they're going to have to incur the cost of developing the plans, this doesn't seem reasonable. For a, for a pumpkin patch, or a Christmas tree lot, we're not putting them through that sort of a process. But they lay out a plan, they show us where they're going to keep things on the site, they show us if they're going to displace parking, they show us if they're going to have parking for themselves, they show all those things. That's the process, it's a very simple process for a very short period of time when this is taking place.
This came through the Public Safety Subcommittee, by the way, so we do have a little bit of information, we know it was, what was brought, what, what's being, what was approved to go to Council, and it, as Rick mentioned, we are talking about permits to nonprofit organizations. They have to qualify as a nonprofit organization to get the permit to sell the fireworks during that, that window of time. So this isn't a commercial venture, this is a fundraising opportunity.
And I understand, and I'm not suggesting that we use a CUP, I was just using that as an extreme example to say that until we know what is being permitted, I'm uncomfortable picking the process. Does the public have an opportunity to weigh in on a TUP?
Not on each individual TUP, no, though, the, the public's weigh-in process is here, the Public Safety Subcommittee meetings that we, which we've had already on this matter, we've had a couple of them on this topic, and, and ultimately the City Council meeting. But the individual issuance of a permit to this nonprofit or that nonprofit would not be subject to public review.
So taking the argument to its extreme, case one tonight was a gas station, and the neighbors didn't want it in their neighborhood, and they had the opportunity to come out and say that, and obviously the, the Commission reacted. But if, instead of a gas station, it was a fireworks stand, and they had the same opinion with a TUP, they wouldn't have that opportunity. And again, I'm taking this to the extreme.
Yeah, but, a, as we mentioned, I, I don't think a CUP would ever be considered by...
And I'm not lobbying for that.
Just because of the...
I'm just using it as an extreme example to make the point that the cart, to me, is a little bit before the horse.
If you have any, I mean, all I can offer is to answer any questions about what the ordinance, proposed ordinance was, that went through Public Safety Subcommittee, and, and what's going before the Council, I, I am familiar with it, I was, I attended all those meetings. So it's, right now, we're just, we're just talking about that process.
You can answer this question better than me. Have we done something similar to this before, where we've approved the approval mechanism prior to knowing what was being approved? The specifics of it?
Well, not specifically like this, but similar into, in that we often send things to Council, I mean, the closest thing that we've done recently is with respect to marijuana. The marijuana ordinances, I believe, came before this body for a recommendation, but only part of them were subject to the jurisdiction of this body. Other parts of them, the regulatory ordinance was not, and came separately before the Council. This body looked at the land use ones only, where they would be located. Yeah, I'm just saying, smoke shops had a similar thing. So this is not at all unusual, it's just, it's unusual in that actually what's coming before you tonight is a lot less than, than you would typically see in those other ordinances, only because we've got an existing, we already have the existing setup in place that staff would like to use to implement it, and simply because it changes the development code, it requires us to come before this body first for a recommendation.
All right, well, that being said, any thoughts? Anybody want to make a motion? Either way? It seems that what we're acting on tonight will have very little, if any, impact on, on what's to come, so... For what it's worth, I, I think we'll roll with staff's recommendation, unless there's strong opposition. If there is, speak up.
I really am, I'm really opposed to this. Not the staff or anything like that, but to me, going to approve this, it's implied that we think it's okay to have fireworks. We all live in neighborhoods where, Fourth of July, we hold our breath to make sure our houses don't burn to the ground. So by us saying this is how we're going to, to do this, right to me, and we have, and it's not our place to have that discussion here about if fireworks are good or bad, but I know all of us, we all live in a desert, we all know the bad parts to this, without even getting into that. By us saying this is how we can permit this, it implies that I'm saying it's okay to do it, and I'm not going to vote for it.
I don't, I don't take it that way, but I do appreciate the concern about acting on it prior to knowing the process that we're, or the activity that we're regulating. So if you feel that way, make a motion and see if it draws a second, and...
I was waiting to see if someone voted for it first, and then I was going to say, no.
Well, if we vote for it, then it's too late.
All right, I'd like to make a recommendation, help me with that.
Yeah, I think the motion would be that we deny the...
Deny it?
...application before us? Like we did on the previous one?
And it's no reflection on the staff or what they've done on this, I don't take it personally.
Yeah, you can, you can make a motion to...
Recommend denial of resolution?
You're not recommending denial, because in this case, it would be a, a, a final action.
You're taking an action to recommend that the City Council do not, does not approve the ordinance?
So they're not recommend, they're not, they're not... Making, yeah, it's just a motion, it's a, yeah, it's a, it's just a motion to not approve the resolution as, as presented.
I recommend that the Planning Commission not approve Resolution 2018-28. That's simple.
A second.
We have multiple seconds.
Again, this is a double negative.
Please vote. And if you vote yes, you are...
You're voting against the ordinance.
You're voting against the resolution.
A yes vote is a, is no fireworks.
Voting that the resolution be denied.
No TUP process. A yes vote on this motion is no TUP process.
I was a mover, but I can't vote yes because I was a mover.
You moved it.
But that's not right. I have a star there, you're sure?
Yes.
Okay.
When you move, you're automatically a, a yes vote.
I am, okay. Is there's a star on no, I just wanted to make sure.
I don't want the fireworks, but if it goes through, I think they, they should...
All right, the motion is approved five to one.
I don't think that's correct either. I would, I would, I would recommend you take a roll call vote on this, and make sure everybody's...
Mine came up wrong.
Because the mover should be a yes. The motion was to not approve the TUP process.
I have no choice.
She should be a yes.
So I would, I would take a roll call voice and, and make it, okay, she has her as a yes in the system, even though it's not...
I am showing on my screen that I have you as a yes.
Can you just announce them all, so that we can be sure, since the system is not matching? Do a roll call?
I have Commissioner Robert Harris, yes. Commissioner Joanne Steven, yes. Commissioner Jeffrey Sims is absent. Commissioner Alvin Dejeunay, yes. Commissioner Ray Baker, yes. Vice Chair Patricia Korsick, yes. Chair Jeffrey Barnes, yes.
All right, staying corrected, the motion carries six zero. Staff wrap up?
Chair and Commissioners, the City Council will be considering this amendment to the Temporary Use Permit Regulations at its May one regular scheduled hearing.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, other Commission business. I don't see that there is any. Any staff comments? There's not to be. Planning Commissioner comments? None? Well, with that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting until the next regularly scheduled meeting, May twenty-fourth, at seven PM, in these chambers. Thank you very much. Good night.